I call this meeting to order. Today, we have one item on the agenda. It's the mayor's message and budget presentation for the 2020-2021, 2022 biennial budget. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President, council members, and members of the Renton community. The past year has been difficult for everyone. We have stayed home and created physical distance from one another. Businesses have shut their doors and many workers have lost their jobs. Some of us have even lost loved ones to COVID-19. Renton residents and businesses have felt the impact of this pandemic, and we at City Hall have had to find new ways to do business. During these times, I want to assure you that while the city has had to adapt and find new and more efficient ways of doing business, the city is doing well. We are currently providing all of our core services. In fact, we are continuing to set higher goals in the level of services we provide. We are making sure that the residents and businesses are aware of assistance and support that's available to help them recover from the current hardships. I'm pleased to present you with my budget proposal for the 2021-2022 biennial. First, I want to thank Jan Hahn and her staff for all their work in preparing the budget document that you have received. And special thanks to our department administrators for their effort and collaborative spirit in preparing this budget. Throughout the process, they focus on our ability to continue to provide quality services citywide as defined in your business plan. Following my comments, Jan will provide you with an overview of the budget and a schedule for the individual department budget proposal presentations. Thanks to small and strategic actions delivered by our department heads, we can remain financially strong in the upcoming biennium and not compromise our priorities and still plan for some of the key areas of focus that are important to our community. Our commitment to serving our residents is defined by the city's business plan, and each department operates with these goals in mind, and they are: Providing a safe, healthy, vibrant community. Promoting economic vitality and strategically positioning our community for the future. Supporting planned growth and influencing decisions to foster environmental sustainability. Building an inclusive, informed city with equitable outcomes for all in support of social, economic, and racial justice for all. And meeting service demands and providing high-quality customer service. As part of our commitment to being an inclusive, informed city with equitable outcomes for all, this year, we specifically strengthened and expanded our strategic goal of inclusion by adding an emphasis of equity, accountability, and community input. In addition, we have built strong relationships with leaders from every ethnic and religious group in our community. Our internal departments will be working to enhance our systems to improve access to city purchasing and contracting services for women and minority-owned businesses. And our human resource department has led the region in launching several new hiring policies to provide more opportunities for all applicants. We will continue with an enhanced mandatory all-employee training that addresses implicit bias, race, and social justice, as well as emphasizes high performance. With our success in the census this year has been incredible. With our recent count just at under 75%, we have gone from being one of the most undercounted cities in the country to now claiming the top spot in South King County. In fact, we are now one of the top in the country. And the long-term positive impact on our budget because of this increase of funds and resources is very encouraging. We were able to do this by actively seeking grants from the state and other organizations to help us with our outreach. Much of the credit goes to our community and members of our task force, the mobilization of census ambassadors, our partners, and stakeholders. Thank you all. In order to build our city for the future, we are investing in federal and state funding where it makes the most sense. Using CARES funding, we've been able to provide significant funding for regional assistance, feeding programs, and business assistance, all of which supports our business plan. The city will be allocating $388,000 in CARES Act rental assistance funding to nine local agencies. Another $401,000 in community development block grants will be distributed to the Renton Housing Authority, St. Vincent de Paul St. Anthony's, and the Renton Salvation Army Food Bank. The city has also embarked earmarked $1.38 million in CARES grant for 188 qualified small businesses in Renton. None of the challenges in implementing the business plan of the city has been more difficult than advancing the city's economic development agenda. With the support of the city council, committed staff, and strong partnerships with the business and development community, we have not only persevered, but advanced the city's economic development agenda. Within two weeks of the governor's stay-at-home order, staff in community and economic department and other departments were completely operational, albeit remotely. This was an incredible feat, and one that could not have been accomplished without the leadership and the staff in the administrative services and human resource departments. The pandemic has had a catastrophic impact on much of the business community. Restaurants, bars, and other businesses closed under the governor's order amid fears and concerns of the future. CED staff resources were redirected and deployed to assist the business community with state and federal funding applications, enhanced communication and marketing tools, and implementation of new public health guidelines, as well as rental support and assistance. For the first time, permits and land use applications are almost entirely processed online. Engineering and building inspector vehicles have been transformed into offices, and inspections that cannot be performed in person are conducted virtually. The Planning Commission and Hearing Examiner continue to do important work and keep the process moving. Staff communicate, collaborate, and meet the daily expectation to support local businesses, new development, and the businesses that want to make rent in their home. Community and economic development continues to cross-train and work with other departments to streamline our work and effective ways to ensure the public dollars go further. These collective efforts are reflective in the initiatives and projects being advanced in the 2021-2022 budget cycle. We anticipate the completion of many permitted developments projects, including the opening of Valley Medical Center's new cancer treatment facility, Top Golf, and the Sunset Terrace apartment. Two new affordable workforce housing projects, Sunset Oaks and Willow Quest Townhomes are expected to come online in the coming year. And multiple investments are being made in our downtown core, building on the work already underway to build intersections, enhance pedestrian amenities, and return two-way travel to our streets. This ongoing work will enhance the safety and beauty of our historic business district with new lighting, landscape, signage, and public art. Hundreds of millions of dollars have been invested in Renton on new projects that vary from the beautiful Hyatt Regency Hotel at Southport to the new office developments and housing projects. Partnerships remain a vital part of our success in furthering the business plan. Partnerships with Renton Housing Authority, KCLS, and private developers, plus support from state legislator, help us to continue the transformation of the Sunset area into a beautiful new neighborhood teeming with investment. The opening of the Sunset Neighborhood Park is a testament of what can be achieved in working with long-term partners to build our community. The Family First Community Center, which will improve the quality of life for thousands of residents in the Cascade area, is another example of what can be accomplished through strong partnerships. We continue to work with Renton School District, Health Point, the Doug Baldwin Foundation, Renton Regional Community Foundation, and other generous donors and supporters to make the community center a reality. Investing in our infrastructure and capital improvement projects is critical to the long-term health and well-being of our city. One of the key priorities that we have identified for the upcoming 2021-2022 budget is a North Water Walk at Jingkuan Memorial Beach Park. Not only will this provide a significant amenity for our residents and community, but is also a especially important safety feature for the park. Another key capital project is a two-way protected bike lane on southeast 168th Street in the Cascade-Vinson area that will provide connection between two schools. This area needs significant infrastructure investment, and this project will highly benefit the community with increased safety and accessibility. For both these projects, we will seek grant funding from the state. Some other transportation priorities include: Finishing the right-of-way construction for 405 North 8th Street Direct Access Route with an estimated cost of approximately $250 million; The 405-167 Area Transit Improvement and Grady Way Overcrossing; Complete the 405-44th Street Structured Parking; Rain Air Grady Way Transit Oriented Development Initiative; King County work on the Renton Extension of East Rail, I-405 Renton to Bellevue Project. In Renton, we have committed ourselves to public safety, strategy that places our safety of our community and the partnership with our residents first. In a time of unprecedented challenges to our city and community, our police department remains dedicated to their stated mission, working together to provide professional and unbiased law enforcement services to our community. Throughout the nation, the expectations of law enforcement is to be transparent, accountable, and fair. I am confident the Renton Police Department will meet those expectations. The city of Renton maintains the lowest crime rate in South County cities by using its full complement of police services and partnerships with our community. By providing proactive, responsive resources and programs to address crime and safety issues, Renton often sets the example for others to follow. There are several examples of how Renton Police work in collaboration with the community to provide such outstanding services. The department's Take Me Home program is a community-driven program designed for the safe return of loved ones who may have difficulty communicating or may need special assistance during an emergency situation. Safe Place is an initiative that was born out of need to address low reporting of anti-LGBTQ+ crimes and school bullying incidents. By partnering with local businesses, we will provide a safe place for victims to shelter while a crime is reported. We hope to increase the feeling of an opportunity for safety in our community. I would like to thank the members of the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, and in particular Kevin Poole, for bringing the idea to us and supporting our efforts in this program. Recently, the Police Department held a series of online polls to create a baseline of interests, concerns, and expectations of the department and what residents feel policing should look like in Renton. With this data, they will now engage the community through a series of forums and discussions specific to the communities of Renton. The goal of this engagement will be to provide education, information, and most importantly, gain community perspective and feedback on our policies and practices to ensure the department is providing the services our community expects. Programs and efforts like these make me proud and give me confidence our Police Department will not only rise to these necessary changes or challenges, but set an example on collaborative community engagement and public safety. This balanced budget proposal will allow us to continue to meet the service needs of our growing community, albeit under some rather challenging circumstances due to revenue losses associated with COVID-19. Other than the 1% property tax adjustment allowed by the state law, this budget does not require any new taxes for the next two years to meet our service-level objectives. This is despite the end of a $3 million sales tax subsidy we have been receiving from the state for annexing Cascade-Vinson community in 2008, which ended in mid-2018. This two-year budget proposal shows revenues of $523.8 million, with revenues projected to rebound slightly starting in 2021 after a significant loss of $16.9 million in 2020 due to COVID-19. The largest loss of revenue due to COVID is from VNO tax, sales tax, and permit and recreation fees due to closures. Like all government agencies, we continue to see costs of labor and materials increasing at a higher percentage than revenues. With those exceptions, we have been fortunate to have a strong economy in the past several years. As a result of revenue loss in 2020 and the undetermined depth or duration of the impact of COVID-19, we have decided to hold the line and are proposing a baseline budget for 2021. This will help us focus on stabilizing and maintaining core city services at a level that is expected by our residents and businesses while ensuring that the city remains in a financially stable position. The proposed budget reflects the use of reserves during 2021 and 2022, again, due in large part to the impact of COVID-19, but also as a result of the fact that expenditures tend to grow at a higher percentage than revenues. It will be challenging in future years to main service levels without new sources of income, as we have discussed during the 2020 council retreat. As many of you recall, we reduced our staffing in 2009 to address the impact of the recession, despite significant increase in population. We learned from that experience and it has helped us with our cost containment efforts in 2020 and in planning for this budget cycle. Again, we are proposing a baseline budget for 2021. There are no new positions proposed for the upcoming biennium. The only changes proposed for the 2021-2022 preliminary budget are due to amendments to the original adopted 2019-2020 budget made during that timeframe, increases to the cost for medical and employee benefits, a proposed small living adjustment in 2022. If we continue to work together, I'm confident that we can solidly navigate a city budget, and far more important, a pathway to the future that truly reflects our values and our collective love for this phenomenal city. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pavoni. Good evening, Council President, President Council Members. As the mayor indicated, I will be providing an overview of the mayor's proposed budget. So please bear with me as I share my screen. Okay, we will be spending the next few weeks presenting the proposed budget in greater detail by department. We provided an electronic link along with your agenda, and we also provided hard copies to Julia Mitzigian. So if you have not picked up your copy, there are hard copies available for the entire council. As we go through this presentation, I will note the page numbers where you can find the various charts where they are in the budget document. It's a rather voluminous document, as you probably have noted, so I will not be covering the entire thing. The intent is simply to give you an overview. And then, as I mentioned, there'll be more detail in the upcoming weeks. And as you review that document, please contact us at any time if you have any questions during your deliberations. This slide shows the schedule of budget deliberations. Again, we start with the overview tonight. The departments will provide more in-depth info over the next couple of weeks. We have a very packed calendar for October 12th and October 19th, so we're going to be starting at 4 o'clock those days to cover everything. We will try to use our time as efficiently as possible, but definitely feel free to ask questions along the way. If we can't answer your questions there and then, we will respond both in writing and at the next meeting. We'll focus our presentations primarily on the operating budgets since parks, facilities, and transportation capital projects budgets were discussed in August. We have two additional public hearings, and the budget ordinances and related ordinances are teed up for our first readings on November 2nd and final consideration on November 9th. This slide is in the budget document in the Budget Highlights section on pages 123 and 124. This slide represents the total combined 2021-2022 citywide budget. Total estimated revenues are $494.2 million. Proposed expenditures are $507.5 million. The recent citywide expenditures exceed revenue is due primarily to the use of fund reserves to fund major capital projects in transportation and the governmental CIP, as well as the utility funds and other planned equipment purchases. The recent citywide expenditures... I'm sorry. On this revenue side, you will note that the revenue picture is pretty typical of our taxes. 34% for taxes, 35% charges for services, and that's made up primarily of utility charges at 33% and just development service fees of 2%. Inter-fund transactions and intergovernmental revenues make up a combined 24%. Capital grants represent 1%. Fines and forfeits and other miscellaneous revenues, 6%. Property tax makes up 9% of our total revenue. The revenue is 4.2% lower than the 2019-2020 adopted budget, primarily due to the impact from the COVID-19 pandemic. On the expenditure side, Public Works makes up the single largest share at 41%. That's because utilities and capital projects are also included in there. Expenditures are $17.5 million, or 3.4% less than the prior budget due to the cost containment efforts that we put in place and due to lower capital investments. This slide can be found on page 125 of your budget document. The slide represents the citywide budgeted expenditures, how the money is spent, including both operating and capital by line item. 37% of our costs are related to personnel. Service and utilities are next at 30%. Capital is 7%, made up primarily of transportation and utility fund projects. Inter-fund charges are 20%. This includes charges such as information, technology, communications, fleet, equipment rental, insurance, and facilities. Personnel costs are driven by several factors. First is wages. Second, pension contribution for PERS employees, which is over half our employees, are budgeted at 14.9% compared to 13.9% in 2020, and they continue to grow as wages increase. Medical costs are also expected to increase at a higher rate than inflation. We're projecting 8% for 2021 and 9% for 2022. Information for city service areas can be found in the proposed budget documents starting on page 2-1 in the Renton Results section. We have six core city service areas: Safety and Health, Representative Government, Livable Community, Mobility, Utilities and Environment, and Internal Support. That said, we actually have over 100 lines of businesses or programs, and those are all shown in great detail on 2-6 to 2-42. We organize our budget by both city service area, which reflects the council's business plan and goals, and department. This slide represents the citywide expenditures by city service area. I would encourage you to look at the Renton Results section of the document. You'll find a great deal of very good information, including performance indicators and a much greater level of detail than I can display on one slide. The largest share is dedicated to Utilities and Environment due to the sizable capital projects in Utilities in '21 and '22. This chart also shows FTE counts by city service area. Of the 614.3 FTEs for '21-'22, the largest portion is in Safety and Health, 202.9 or 33%. The second largest is Utilities and Environment, 122.6 or 20%. As the mayor pointed out, we're proposing a baseline budget, so there's no proposed new FTEs for 2021 or 2022. This slide can be found in the proposed budget book on page 2-2. This is the sixth biennium where we actually look at our budget as a whole and determine the "price of government", to do that by dividing the total operating and capital costs by population. This slide shows the per capita cost by each city service area as well, with Utilities and Environment being the single highest at $922. Our current population is 104,076, which results in a per capita cost of $1,831, or $5.02 per day in 2021, and $1,966, or $5.39 per day in 2022. However, we serve more than just residents. We have an estimated 58,105 employees working in the city of Renton. Our services and our amenities are used by workers as well as residents. So if you look at daytime population, the city's cost is just only... is just $1,175 per person, or $3.22 per day in 2021, and $1,261 per person, or $3.46 per day. This slide can be found in the proposed budget book on pages 126 and 127. The slide represents the 2021- and 2022 General Fund budget. General Fund revenues are estimated at $203.1 million. Proposed expenditures are $226.4 million. The General Fund is the primary operating fund of the city, and it's primarily supported by taxes. General Fund revenues are very close to the same amount as the adopted 2019-2020 budget, reflecting the impact of the loss of revenue due to COVID-19. Taxes comprise 77% of our revenue, with property and sales tax representing the single largest share of taxes with combined 50% of General Fund revenue. Property tax is limited to a 1% per year... a lesser of 1% per year, our inflation, plus new construction, which places some pretty significant limitations on future growth from this revenue source. We do, however, as the mayor pointed out, support operational expenses at the current tax levels, and it also supports our debt service for the 2019 park improvement bonds. Sales tax remains fairly strong. However, the city was hit hard, as the mayor noted, with a $3 million per year loss in annexation sales tax revenue back in mid-2018. But we anticipated and planned for that by setting aside reserves. Those reserves helped offset the loss of that revenue plus the loss of some of the revenues due to COVID-19. Operational expenses in the General Fund provide the majority of the city's core services. Our core services include police, public works, parks, community services, and community economic development. On the expenditure side, police represent 38% of the budget. Community services, community economic development, and public works account for 39% of the budget. The remaining 23% is made up of general government, debt service, and transfers. Taking a longer-range look at the city's future, we know that wage adjustments, pension increase, medical premium costs, and other costs tend to rise at a faster rate than our revenues grow. So we are planning for that future, and I will address that later in this presentation when I talk about the long-range forecast. This slide can be found in the proposed budget on page 1-28. This slide depicts the General Fund expenditures by line item. Most of our services are delivered by employees, and therefore, it's no surprise that personnel expenses make up 61% of the General Fund budget. Inter-fund expenses for internal services are also approximately 62% in personnel costs. So close to 2/3 of our budget for the General Fund are personnel-related costs. Services and utilities comprise 19% of the operating budget in 2021 and 2022. Inter-fund charges are 15%. So where does your tax dollar go? This slide can be found in the book on page 1-33. Property taxes, as mentioned earlier, make up 21% of our General Fund revenue. That said, the city only receives 10 cents on the dollar from property owners' tax bills. The largest share of the property owner's tax bill goes to the school district at 31.5%, followed by the state school fund at 27.3%. followed by the state school fund at 27.3%, King County, 12%, the regional authority, fire authority, 7.4%, and the balance of the 11.8% goes to the regional transit authority, the port, hospital, EMC, and the King County library system. It should be noted that the city has significant unused tax capacity to support the general fund operations in the future. Unfortunately, this slide cannot be found in the proposed budget. We only have preliminary information from King County regarding our assessed value, and as such, we have not completed our calculation of the property tax levy. The 2021 proposed budget includes $21.494 million in property taxes. We are not proposing an increase at all to our property tax levy. Once we have the final numbers for the new construction and our assist, our official assessed valuation from King County, we will update the calculation, and this number could be a bit higher. The levy from that, as you will note, if you look at 2017 and 18, we significantly reduced our property tax levy, and this was due to our commitment, the commitment we made when we supported the formation of the Regional Fire Authority. The levy from that point forward is fairly flat, again, due to property tax limitations in the state of Washington. We do, however, as I mentioned earlier, have ample capacity to increase our levy should it be deemed necessary and council so chooses to do so in the future. This slide can be found in the proposed budget on page 1-34. Rent and sales tax is relatively strong, generating $314 million in total sales tax. However, much of the sales tax goes to other taxing jurisdictions, very similar to property tax. Renton only gets 10% of the total sales tax generated. The largest share goes to the state at 64%. The second largest goes to Sound Transit, 14%, followed by King County Transit at 9%. The addition of the Business and Occupation Tax in 2016 was necessary in order to stabilize and maintain city services at a level that our residents and businesses expect and to position us for the future. The proposed 2021-2022 structure remains the same with a low report, with a high reporting threshold of $500,000 and very low rates of .05% for retail and .085% for all other businesses. The maximum amount paid by any business is currently capped at $4 million, 4.723 million. The ordinance the council adopted many years ago includes an automatic adjustment annually for inflation. There are no proposed increases to the tax rates our structure for 2021 or 2022 at this time. Total estimated revenue from BNO tax for the upcoming biennium is $6.5 million in 2021 and $9.5 million in 2022. A portion, $1 million per year for the biennium, supports our capital improvement program. This, the increase in 2022 revenue reflects a rebound from the pandemic as well as the return of the 737 Max into production over time. In addition, we have a registration fee of $150 annually, which is estimated at 919,000 in 2021 and 928,000 in 2022. This slide illustrates how business license and tax revenue is used. As I noted here, and as I mentioned earlier, the BNO taxes and licenses have historically been used to fund both general government and capital improvements. There's a smaller portion of BNO tax shared with the general government CIP and the transportation CIP for 2021 and 2022, and we are replacing that revenue with real estate excise tax because those capital improvements qualify under the legal definition of what can, what we can use REIT for. This slide can be found in the proposed budget book on page 1-31. The proposed budget for the biennium is balanced, but as I mentioned, the city, like all cities, is challenged over the long haul to balance budgets with the current tax limitations. We are also challenged because of reductions in property taxes due to the formation of the RFA, the loss of the annexation sales tax credit, and the fact that, as the mayor noted, our costs increase faster than our revenues do. Furthermore, the revenue losses from the pandemic have further challenged us as a city. As the mayor indicated, we are heading into 2021 with a baseline budget. Until we fully understand the depth and duration of the pandemic, we must continue to conservatively budget. Hopefully, with conservatism bridged with growth in the economy, continued efforts to be lean and identify efficiencies, and long-term savings it should result from the formation of the RFA, we will see this picture improve over time. Some of the initial data from sales tax receipts and the additional savings generated by the departments will lead us to believe that this picture may very well improve. Regardless, we always continue to look for ways to bolster our financial sustainability. At some point down the road, we will have to resume that conversation that we had earlier at your retreat about longer-term financial sustainability. Fortunately, this biennial budget is balanced without any additional taxes for our residents or our businesses. And especially during these challenging times, that is something that you can be very proud of. So that concludes the overview of the citywide budget. As I noted at the beginning of the presentation, we have scheduled department presentations on October 12th and 19th and additional time as needed on October 26th. The second public hearing is, will be tonight. A third and final public hearing will be held as well before the reading of the legislation on November 2nd. Admittedly, I've given you a lot of, this has been very high-level. I've given you a lot of information in pretty short order, but I'm happy to answer whatever questions you have. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Council President Perez.
Thank you. Thank you, Jan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well. So, Jan, you just mentioned during the next three weeks and more, if it's necessary, the departments will be presenting in great detail more information about the budget. However, if any of you have right now a comment or a question, please raise your hand. Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you. Jan, thank you so much for making, as plain as possible, this very, very, very big book. Really appreciate it and taking the time to exactly outline where we were in this story and the presentation. It's just a beautiful job and a really carefully put-together document. I'm wondering, is part of the department budget presentations, if we're going to be receiving a little more information about what specific business plan proposals are being addressed? I'm sorry, what specific part of the business plans are being addressed by the department budget?
That is certainly our intent, is to have them discuss their individual department budgets and tie it back so that it definitely illustrates how they are addressing the business plan goals.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you. Yes, and I've spent Friday and most of the weekend making my way through the document. And one thing that I thought would be very helpful is if somehow we could clearly call out those goals or budget items that are in '21 and '22 because they got postponed due to COVID or postponed for whatever reason. So if we have carry-forward goals or projects, it would be nice to be able to just call those out with maybe a brief explanation of why they're being carried forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember O'Hara. Councilmembers, do you have more questions or comments? Here none. I want to thank you again, Jan. Great presentation and looking forward to work with you guys in the next three weeks or more. I don't know how long it's going to take, but. And also, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your message. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, this meeting is such a, thank you.
Thank you.